The August 25th, 2020 meeting of the Marion County School Board is called to order. We are the Marion County School District Governance Team. If we choose one word to describe us, it will be student-centered because student success is our mission. When we come together to work, we are efficient, effective, and productive. Our three most important characteristics are dedicated, transparency, and individually responsible. To work well together, we must demonstrate respect, confront reality, and be accountable. We will always put students first. We will leave a legacy of success. For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I'm requesting everyone in the audience to please remove your hats and turn off your electronic devices or put them on vibrate. Later in the meeting, up to 30 minutes will be provided for individuals to address the board on matters concerning the operation of the Marion County School System or the school board only. Presentations to the board are limited to five minutes and are televised. If you wish to address the board regarding a regular agenda item or matters on which the board customarily takes action, you must first complete a PEAT form located on the table in the hallway. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing or a student discipline matter, please complete a lime green form. These forms must be fully completed and received by the board's secretary no later than 5:40 p.m. The procedures applicable for each are on a separate sheet. My secretary, please call the roll.
Mrs. Nancy Stacy, District 1. Mrs. Beth McCall, District 2.
Here.
Mrs. Kelly King, District 5.
Here.
Mrs. Nancy Thoreau, District 4.
Here.
Mr. Eric Cummings, District 3.
Here.
Dr. Diane Gullett, Superintendent.
Here.
Ms. Suzanne Green, School Board Attorney.
Here.
Let's please stand for pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Superintendent.
Thank you, Chairman Cummings, members of the board. I would like to, I'm going to recommend approval of the agenda for the August 25th, 2020 school board meeting with the materials in the board packet. Those materials distributed to board members at the meeting and the audio recording included as part of the official record of the meeting with the exception of item D 21.1 that has been placed under discussion.
May I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Thoreau.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. King. In discussion. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the May 26th, 2020 school board meeting?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. McCall, seconded by Ms. King. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? In discussion. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the June 4th, 2020 administrative briefing and work session?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Thoreau.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. McCall. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? There being none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the June 9th, 2020 school board meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. McCall, seconded by Ms. King. Are there any additional corrections to the minutes? No discussion. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Oh, now it's the school board's attorney to explain the rules governing persons who wish to address the school board tonight.
In compliance with Section 286.0114 Florida statutes, the school board has adopted uniform procedures for public speakers who wish to speak at tonight's meeting either regarding one of tonight's agenda items or a matter related to the operations of the school district. These procedures will ensure the public has a reasonable opportunity to be heard on school board and school district matters. A written summary of these procedures is available from the table in the hallway. Public speaker forms are also located on the same table. The completed forms were due to the, are due to the school board secretary no later than 5:40 p.m. Tonight's speakers will be called prior to the business portion of the school board's meeting in the order of receipt by the school board secretary. Before you begin speaking, please state your name and address for the record and spell your last name. Each speaker will have five minutes of time. However, if there are more than five persons who wish to speak, the board may seek consensus to limit each speaker's time to three minutes. When the speaker has one minute remaining, the speaker will receive a visual notice to complete his or her comments. Speakers may not yield their time to others. Speakers and meeting attendees are expected to conduct themselves in a respectful manner. Verbal attacks and profanity are prohibited. Pursuant to the procedures for public comments, item six, speakers are not to identify specific individuals other than themselves or their child unless the statement is provided 24 hours in advance. If there are matters dealing with student discipline to include expulsions, they will be scheduled at the conclusion of the televised portion of this meeting. Parents may address the board regarding a discipline matter at that time. To ensure student privacy, only a parent or guardian may use a student's first or last name. Identifying references to or identification of other students and/or their families is also strictly prohibited. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chris Altobello?
Chris Altobello, A-L-T-O-B-E-L-L-O, 2020 Northeast 43rd Street, Ocala, Florida. Good evening, Chairman Cummings, board members, Superintendent Gullett. Yesterday, Judge Charles Dodson ruled that Education Commissioner Richard Corcoran's executive order is unconstitutional. He stated that it arbitrarily disregards safety, denies local school boards' decision-making with respect to reopening brick-and-mortar schools, and conditions funding on an approved reopening plan with a start date in August. In other words, it basically says that school districts, employees, and students should not be bullied when deciding what is in the best interest of their communities. Wanted to take a moment to provide you with some details regarding the lawsuit and dispel any rumors you may be hearing. First, the purpose of the lawsuit is to allow districts to make the best decisions for their schools, students, employees, and community. We do not believe Commissioner Corcoran has the legal right to compel districts to open brick-and-mortar schools without regard to the health and well-being of the students and staff in the district. Our lawsuit aims to invalidate Commissioner Corcoran's emergency order so that districts are free to make decisions without the fear of lost funding or other retaliatory actions. And when schools open, they are able to meet all of the health recommendations of the CDC, including such things as social distancing, regular and frequent sanitizing of classrooms, ample soap and handwashing stations, cloth face coverings, and more. Second, our lawsuit is not about keeping schools closed. It is about making sure districts have all options available, including the option to choose distance learning as a temporary and safe way to educate children. Local control must be given to our county to determine in accordance with health and CDC guidelines what is in the best interest of our students and staff. Third, we want to be back in school. We want to see our kids. The Florida Education Association believes the best place for kids to be is in our public school classrooms, but we want to protect our kids and those adults charged with providing the high-quality public education they deserve. If you are hearing from the media and/or others that the lawsuit is simply to stop schools from reopening, you are being misled. Read Judge Dodson's order. We are doing everything in our legal power to protect our students, school employees, and our communities. FEA is not trying to stop the start of school. We're trying to stop a bully, three hours to the north, who is determined to take away the power of locally-elected school boards across the state. We are trying to inject reason into the process of educating children during a pandemic. We want districts to have the ability to determine what is best for their students and communities. I posted the comment on social media thread yesterday that in my mind, what this decision means is that local school boards should have been given the authority all along to open brick-and-mortar when they determined it was safe without fear of lost funding or other retaliatory actions, and not when one person who doesn't give a rat's you-know-what about my two public school kids decides so. To all our teachers, support staff, and students, there is one organization that continues to do the heavy lift to promote public education, and that is the Florida Education Association. No matter what the eventual outcome will be, I am proud of the FEA and their taking on of this bully. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Altobello.
That's it.
And it's noted, duly noted. All right. May I have a motion to approve concerning agenda items C 6.1 through C 19.1 with the exception of item D 21.1 that has been placed under discussion?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Thoreau. Seconded by Ms. King. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
May I have a motion to approve the Skyward maintenance and license fees for business and student information suite?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. McCall.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Thoreau. Discussion?
No, they shared this with us at the work session.
We discussed that at the work session concerning, so there's no discussion. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. May I have a motion to approve the following cash or tangible donations that have a total value of $17,724. $2,500 to Bellevue Elementary School from their business partner, Bellevue United Methodist Church, Inc., via the Public Education Foundation of Marion County. $2,500 to H Street Elementary School from their business partner, Glover Law Firm, LLC, via the Public Education Foundation of Marion County. Student backpacks and supplies valued at $1,003 to Pheasant Elementary School and the Marion County Veterans Council, Inc. Student backpacks and supplies valued at $1,003 to the Fort McCoy School from the Marion County Veterans Council, Inc. Students backpacks and supplies valued at $1,003 to Legacy Elementary School from the Marion County Veterans Council, Inc. Student backpacks and supplies valued at $1,003 to Marion County, to Marion Oaks Elementary School from the Marion County Veterans Council, Inc. Student backpacks and supplies valued at $1,003 to Shady Hill Elementary School from the Marion County Veterans Council, Inc. Student backpacks and supplies valued at $1,003 to South Ocala Elementary School from the Marion County Veterans Council, Inc. Student backpacks and supplies valued at $1,003 to Spar Elementary School from the Marion County Veterans Council, Inc. Picnic tables valued at $1,200 to Spar Elementary School from John and Carolyn Cook. Student backpacks and supplies valued at $1,003 to Stanton Wearsdale Elementary School from the Marion County Veterans Council, Inc. $2,500 to Vanguard High School from their business partner, Siva MDP-A, via the Public Education Foundation of Marion County. And $1,000 to Vanguard High School from their business partner, Rainies, Inc., via the Public Education Foundation of Marion County.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. McCall.
Okay.
Seconded by Ms. Thoreau. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'm, I'll say something tonight. That was a lot by the Marion County Veteran Council. We thank them. We thank all of our, all of our, um, those people that are so generous to this, this, to this school district. This is, and since I've been on the board, this is the one thing that I know, so we never have discussion on. Nobody ever has discussion on it, so that's a good thing. We never have discussion on it because we appreciate everything that the community does for Marion County and valuing and investing in the kids and students of Marion County. So again, we thank you for the donations and for just looking out for us. All right. The next regular administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for September 3rd, 2020, at 9 o'clock a.m. The purpose of the work session is to discuss the legislative agenda, prep for MC Legislative Delegation Meeting, Exceptional Student Education Special Programs and Procedures, Facilities Agreement, and Textbook Adoption. A special board meeting, September 16th, 2020, at 9 a.m. The purpose of the special board meeting is to interview school board attorney applicants. The following administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for September 17th, 2020, at 9 a.m. The purpose of the work session is to discuss student progression plan, construction projects, update, annual public education foundation report, Florida Safe Schools Assessment Tool presentation, and discuss school board attorney candidates. That is it. Ms. Leno, attorneys.
I'm good.
Any comments? Attorney Green.
No, thank you.
Dr. Gullett.
Yes, sir. Chairman Cummings, members of the board, I'm pleased to provide with you, to you a recap of day one, welcoming our students back to school yesterday. I'm going to show you a few pictures in just a moment. I want to provide you some data that, that you'd want to hear. So we proudly welcomed 32,411 students yesterday. That is approximately 6,000 difference lower than last year, and 68% were in brick-and-mortar, so very close to what we expected. I do expect that number will go up. We already hearing that many of our parents want to switch and come back into our buildings, but 68% brick-and-mortar, 32% MCPS online, with the reminder that we have a kindergarten staggered start. So until Thursday comes, we have that number as well, so we'll provide that to you. And so what we also learned are a few things, that less than one-half of 1% of students were sent home for COVID-related reasons, less than one-half of 1% on day one. So we'll continue to monitor that, and we will provide the weekly updates, as I shared with you. So each Friday, you will get updates with the categories for staff and students with COVID symptoms that were sent home, reported cases of positive, and all of that on a weekly basis. We are also providing data to the Department of Education. So we've debriefed a couple of times already internally as an executive team and getting feedback from our visits. Here are some things that went well, and I will also share our areas for growth. Transportation was fantastic yesterday. Transportation routes, the timeliness, picking up the students, you know, there are always hiccups, but we were very, very pleased and met a lot of transportation drivers out there in the field, and things were going very smoothly for day one. Students with masks, we had students all over the district that came prepared, thanks to our parents and to our, our team, for preparing them for coming with masks. Most were very colorful, a lot of them matching their backpacks, and so they were very excited and, and pleased and seemed very comfortable wearing masks. And so we were prepared to hand out a lot more. We handed out a few that I heard, but mostly everyone had their mask, so very excited to see them. Our food service team was incredibly versatile. And what I mean by that is they were moving between providing the breakfast, the meals for the week, to our online students at the curb, and then running back in to make sure they were providing the service and the delivery in-house in the brick-and-mortar. So really moving back and forth between those. We do have some challenges we're going to work out with the breakfast pickup that conflicts somewhat with some of the online classrooms. We're going to work through that, but the food service team did a phenomenal job, as always. A lot of really strong procedures and systems were in place. If you're out visiting in classrooms and site by site, it was very evident that the additional weeks of training really paid off. I, I heard it, the phrase that it was like opening a new school for every school, opening a brand-new building. What does this look like this year? It wasn't just a simple return. So the amount of time I heard repeatedly throughout the last couple of days is a thank you to the board for allowing the staff to have more time for preparations, and I think that really paid off. Lot of signage, everything was in place. Social distancing very evident in the classrooms to the extent possible with the size, but even in the cafeteria, watching students come in, get their meals, sit down, they were following dots, they had certain seats, they had numbers on their seats. And so the amount of time taken to see that in action was, was nothing short of been remarkable for our teachers and our, and our teams. The custodial support was fantastic. I observed on several occasions in, in schools where the custodial teams were going down, touching high-touch areas, wiping down the door handles coming into the building, and then walking back and walking down the hallways and wiping down the touch areas where students were transitioning. They were moving quickly, and they were well-equipped and just serving with, with a smile on their faces. Students adapting to online learning, it was really something to go into classrooms where the teachers were delivering online instruction, and you could peek in and wave and see the students interacting. The diligence taken by the teachers and the creativity that they used to engage their students was, was absolutely amazing. They had devices and buckets around them, they were engaging them with small whiteboards, they were finding ways to engage them while they were guiding them, how do we learn online as a class? And it's amazing that they pulled resources out that I would have never thought of, so really, really pleased with that. And really energetic. I mean, just everywhere I went, there, there was such joy in having our students back, so I was really just pleased to see that. So here's our, here are our areas for growth. Technology is one of them. I would say it's probably top of our list right now. We're working through Microsoft Teams and some challenges with that. Discovered at a couple sites that bandwidth was an issue, and that wasn't even so much with us in-house in the district, but site-to-site in homes where students gathered, they discovered on their end that, in the end-users, that they didn't have the bandwidth to have several students online at one time. So working through that and trying to help families the best we can, and in some of those cases, those parents have said, we'd like to transition to brick-and-mortar, it's just not going to be workable for us. We had challenges with muting settings, syncing, and those are, those are challenges that we've been working through as they relate to the, the technical aspects of, of what it looks like to be online. And so the team is reviewing that and making those, and will continue to make those adjustments. We know that more training is still needed, and we'll continue. So want to reiterate the appreciation for the time for training, but also say it didn't end yesterday. It continues, and that's important, especially as we talked about reopening. A lot of things we just didn't know till we had everybody online, and we could work through this, and, and that all played out as we expected, so that training will continue. Class size adjustments, we know that some of the classes are quite large. It goes back to the planning and anticipation of what students were registered for, but we know that in a lot of cases, our teachers have big loads, and we want to try to shift some of those and take the weight off of their shoulders. So those will continue to adjust site-to-site to make those very manageable for our teachers and for our students to interact and learning. That goes along with the schedules too, and the shifts that need to happen there. And we know that we need to continue to provide additional support for our parents as they work on, for this to be online. Again, a reminder that it was so different in the springtime, and we said it was going to be scheduled, which is a very different model with the online than they had previously. So a lot of the school staff are working closely with parents to say, yes, they are following a set schedule, and that has provided some challenges for, for some of our parents at home, and so we're helping them through that. We did meet some challenges throughout the day at several sites with reaching the Department of Health. We know that they were overwhelmed as well, so we had to leave a lot of messages, and we're hoping that we'll continue to work with the Department of Health to get more timely answers and responses when we have questions with them. And those are the big, the big items. And so I would also want to share that we had a lot of calls come into our help desk. You might find it interesting that of our help desk for technology, 80% of the calls that came in were basic questions that were not COVID-related. They were just general questions we would have any other year, school-based questions, how do I change my child's schedule? You know, from this class, they, they wanted to take this instead of this class. Password resets and registration questions, just how do I get my child registered for school? That would happen in any typical year. And we had, our transportation department was very busy, and they handled over almost 1,200 calls, so with, with routing and getting students on buses, so quite a bit. I am just so grateful for our community, for our parents, and for our staff who were so well-prepared. I described it as the sights, sounds of the first day, and how much we appreciated hearing and seeing students learning, and the laughter, again, was just remarkable. I think we did all that we could to prepare for day one, and we will continue to be flexible and work through some of the challenges I've described and other challenges that will come up, but so pleased to have the students back and the joy it brings to have them and see them, even if they were online. To see them and connect with them was just, it just filled our hearts with joy. So happy to answer any questions you have, of course, about our first day.
Any questions, guys?
I have a question. Parents that want to shift from virtual back to brick-and-mortar, say, starting tomorrow, how are we handling that?
Yes, so thank you, Ms. Thoreau. We talked about that the last time at the work session in preparation and trying to provide some time for them to settle. What we are finding, though, that one of the challenges is that some of our students who need to have access and don't have access, even some of our special education students, we have to ensure that we're providing access to high-quality instruction. If they're restricted from doing so for some of the reasons I described, they don't have the access online, it's not working for them, it's important that we do what's best for the students. So I always err on the side of do what's best for students. We need to make sure that we have free, appropriate public education for every child. So we will work on a case-by-case basis to do that, and the principals will work with the area directors to make sure that they're doing that for every child.
Great, great, and I agree with that philosophy. It does make me wonder about the typical three-day count, isn't it? And then the seven-day count, you know, where units get shifted or reallocated or even cut in some circumstances, and I'm wondering how we're going to do that this year because it certainly is a different year with this flowing in and flowing out, at least right now.
Absolutely, absolutely. That's why we have to be flexible with that. So if, if the school has been, and the teacher has been in contact with the student, and they're working on the transitioning for the reasons we talked about, then we're not considering them not to be, not to be enrolled. We're considering them to be enrolled, we're working through to make sure we're providing the education to them.
Okay.
Yes.
Right, great. And then my, my last question was about the Physicians Advisory Committee that Mark Lenders had spoken to us about. I believe he said that they were hoping to meet this week and then have some information that we were really valuing and looking forward to hearing. Is there any updates on that?
I've not heard any update, and as a reminder, that tomorrow, Wednesday, we have our weekly meeting with the Department of Health at 4 o'clock.
Right.
So I hope to hear some update tomorrow.
Okay, and those are just some of the questions that I had, and also that have been brought to me.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
That is the cutest little redheaded girl.
So if I, if I may, if there were no questions, we'd like to just, can you, are you flipping already through them?
This is the fourth one.
Oh, okay. So these are just some snapshots from the day. I guess I can use her first name.
Addie.
Addie, yes, I was, it was, so this is Addie or Adelaide. And so her name tag said Adelaide, but she goes by Addie, and she was just a bundle of joy and ran up and...
Oh, that is sweet.
So personally, she ran up and just hugged me, and I said, okay. This is great. It's all good. So some pictures of signage. There's an example of being very creative with spacing for, for eating. So they went out there to eat, and it was covered, there are big fans out there, and creativity to do that. An online class, getting to greet the principal, said hello. I had a chance to say hello. And students finding their, their classrooms. Lot of help, we appreciate too, all the help that was out all day to support students. Love their masks, too. Absolutely.
There's a little...
A little pitfall. ...recess on day one.
Look at the size of her compared to the milk.
I know, I know.
Last picture were, were, was a, was a roadway, and they learned their social distancing through roadways, and they were learned, they learned not to cross the road, it was unsafe. Creative ways to do social distancing, you can't tell those are little roadways on the floor.
This is great.
And the lunch line. Excited to have cheese sticks on day one. So this teacher, I have to shout out for, this was just remarkable. I don't, you probably can't tell all of the resources that surrounded her, and she has a, her little puppet, but just she would pull things out to engage students, just remarkable.
Kristy Davies.
Modeling, a lot of modeling going on online, how to locate their items online. So just, thank you.
And thank you, Dr. Gullett, for the update. You hit on the, I'm glad I heard positives from every area of our school system. We need to hear that. It's been a long time since we've been in school. Our staff need to hear the positives and know that we are trying to do, we are doing the right things. You also hit the negatives that I, that I had, but I already had discussed them with you, but it was, to me, it, the biggest thing was the, the technology issues. And, and the thing that I've been telling folk is, we knew it's the first day of school, you're going to have some issues. Give us opportunity to try to work those technology issues out. It's going to come, it's, it's, it's new for a lot of, a lot of folk, parents as well as the staff, so I just, I just encourage them to kind of hang in there and give us the opportunity to try to work those. So, I, I just, I just encourage them to kind of hang in there and, and give us the opportunity to try to work those kinks out. I, I, I anticipate that we will get them done in a short, in a short manner. So, thank you for that. The, and you, you hit all the ones that I was talking about, that, that came to me yesterday and today. The muting issues with, I think it was Teams. I think it's Teams that can't mute. And so, the teachers really can't control the classroom because they, it's not able to be muted. So, all the, she, all the kids are just talking and they can't shut them down. And so, it's, it, it makes a problem for that, so. But I think that's supposed to be fixed by the end of the month. I think Teams is working on that, something. So, that's going to get resolved. And then the classroom size was, was another one. And, I, I have a question though. And this is one that I, that I kept observing as I went around. How, how, how are we going to deal with, like, if the kid showed up for school or showed up for an online class and the teacher didn't show up? Because we had a few, we had a lot of those.
Yes.
And I don't know if it was, I think it was more of a technology issue than anything. And is, are those kids going to be gigged for as absent or what?
No, sir. And I'm sorry, I should have elaborated because that was the schedule piece. That was the hiccup with the schedules. Where we had somebody, they were waiting and then someone didn't show up. So, we worked through those unique situations. Mostly technology, yes. And, and when we did our debrief today, I did not hear that we had the same challenges today. I'm not saying that we didn't, I just, we didn't, it wasn't reported out today. So, we will continue to monitor.
It was still some that I saw. And, or they would get dismissed early. And the kid was just, like, sitting there just waiting for the next class to start longer than. So, I, I, some of them, there were some that I saw that they went straight through. I mean, they were just there. But then there were some that had big gaps. And, and again, I'm, I'm thinking it was more technology than anything, than anything, so. But those are some of the things I saw. But, all in all, I think we're off to a good start. I, I'm praying that it gets better and stronger. By Thursday, we have two calls, if that, so. So, but it's, it's, we're off to a good start. The biggest thing, you guys know, one of the biggest things for me is, is the safety of our, of our kids. And, and you said, "We had less than one percent, half of one percent." That's, that's pretty good. So, I look forward to seeing what those numbers are going to be. And hopefully by us be, doing the right things as far as the mask and the, the hands and everything like that, that we're going to be in a good shape. We'll be in very good shape.
The one, the one thing I would add about that is for us to remember to stay diligent and follow that. And not to let our guard down.
Right.
So, there's the anticipation of day one, which I think did go remarkably well. But I, I just ask everyone to stay diligent and to do the right thing. And, and the practices, the hand washing, the, all the things that we've said, the face coverings are important every day, all the time.
And, and you said it. People, once we do something good, we tend to get, we tend to relax and get complacent. And we can't, with this one, we can't get relaxed. We, staff can't get relaxed, parents can't get relaxed, students can't get relaxed. They have to stay as, as, as truthful to this as, as, as necessary till we get through all of this. So, I'm, I'm encouraged by what I saw as well. So, we're praying that we have some more good days like this, so. And we'll work out. I'm sure you guys already have a team that's working out all the kinks on everything else. Thank you. Ms. McCall?
Actually, could I go last, Reverend Cummings?
Sure can.
Thank you. Because I have an issue that we all need to talk about for a while.
Ms. Stacy?
Yes. I'm still on how to manage these kids when they get sent home from school. And so, I've asked Senator Perry to keep working through this with me, with the state and with other districts. And what they found out for me in the last couple of days is they've gone into, speak to the Director of the Alachua County Health Department. And they're doing things different there. They have shared their matrix and their information with our district, but they are doing things different. They have, I've been talking about those roving nurses, y'all know it for two months. They have the roving nurses. They've got something like fourteen LPNs that's kind of targeted to the schools. They are doing the swab, the regular, I guess we call it PCR. And they're doing that, but they're having results back guaranteed in twenty-four hours. They purchased some extra machines in the, in Alachua County. From what I understand, the Health Department purchased them. I don't know if they're going to get them to the school sites. I don't know, I don't know what they're going to do with these machines. But they've purchased some machines with some of their care money. And they've also working with the county, evidently the county itself, the commissioners or something for some, on their care money. I don't know where we got ours from. Maybe that's the way we got ours. We had to petition to them, I don't know. But, they are going to the school and they are swabbing the kids so that the parents don't have to go, "Okay, on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, this site's open until five o'clock. But then if you don't get there, you can go here on Tuesday at the drive-through line." That's been just annoying me so badly. So, they are going to the school, they're swabbing the children. If six children need to be swabbed at different schools, they go there and swab them. They take them in and turn them in, and they're reported the next morning. Parents have given permission. I don't know whether they do it online, I don't know if they do a permission slip, but they have received permission from the parents to swab the children. So, that is the way they're doing it there. They do have the nurses that are going to the school. And I do believe the school district also, no, the Health Department purchased their, their swabs that can come back in twenty-four hours and, and get it done. So, that just sounds like such a better plan than what we're trying to do here. To send the children home with COVID symptoms. And then, mom has to get off work and somebody has to take them to one of these sites that you have to check the calendar to see where to go. And it's easier sometimes just to go, "We'll do it mañana." They're going to the school, they're taking care of it like we need to be doing. So, anyway, that's what Alachua's doing. Thank you.
And you know, Ms. Stacy, thank you for being vigilant on that. For being, because I keep hearing different counties are doing different things.
Well, I thank Senator Perry, he's working with me. And they're, they know who to contact, they can get, I, I couldn't just call the Director of the Health Department of Alachua County.
Correct, correct.
I had to have someone higher up than me to do that. And so, I appreciate their office and that they're taking care of this for us. And so, we need to thank Senator Perry's office. Because I mean, they're just doing, Lake County on one side, Alachua on the other side. They're just, they've just, their Health Department's just got it pulled together a little better for them. And, I don't think we need to give up on this. Because we're going to be running helter-skelter, trying to get this done. And for parents, and for the school, the principal to have to, it just makes so many unnecessary people involved. "Okay, mom, you need to go to this site, you need to go here." There's just too many people at work requiring to be involved to do it like a circus. You know? So, anyway, that's what I have to say about that.
Is it my turn? I usually go.
I mean, you, I, I was still, I thought you were about to say something about what she's saying. You're right. And, and I know Dr. Gullett said there was only half of one percent. I just happened to be at one of those schools where there was one and it was four kids at one time.
But I wonder how long.
Parent was irate because of the fact that they won, they won. And, but we know those things are going to happen. We know that we got to have a plan.
Tell me the pattern, what's going to happen? They go home and then mama takes them somewhere tomorrow. And then, somebody does something the next day.
This was the thing, when, I tried to explain to them that if the doctor cleared them yesterday, they would, and they had no symptoms. Am I saying this right? If the doctor cleared them, they said it was like allergies or something like that. Then they had no symptoms. They clearly came back to school today.
With a, with a note.
With a note, with the doctor's note.
But they could have come back to school today anyway if they were in Alachua County.
If they hadn't taken the test.
Because they would have been swabbed. And they would be back in school anyway today without going and spending money at a doctor's office.
Right, right. And that was the issue that I saw, that this mother had four kids, that she would have had to pay for four doctor visits. And then she didn't have any, I don't know what her financial situation was.
For anybody, that's kind of an extra expense. That's plus sitting in the doctor's office or waiting for them and everything. When there's, we have modeling on both sides of us. That I don't understand why we don't jump on board.
Which one of us is attending the?
Get this done.
Health Department meeting tomorrow.
Me.
You. Okay, all right, two minutes.
And they did say they have shared what they're doing with our Health Department.
Well, Mr. Lenders did mention last week that he wanted to check into what machines they were using. So, I was going to suggest if Ms. McCall, if you can just check in tomorrow and see what he learned.
I will.
That'd be our follow-up question for all of us.
And the man, and gains probably, this name's Mr. Myers. And so, I'm sure they, he's a director. The two directors can get their heads together. And it seems like this would be easy-peasy to me.
We hope, we hope so. I, I hope so. I really hope so, Ms. Stacy.
But the nurses, we, they do have the roving nurses, that they did purchase some with their care money.
Were the roving nurses, I mean, I was going to ask this question, were the roving nurses school board employees or were they Health Department employees?
That's what I didn't write down. I'm sure he told me that, but I didn't write it down. I felt like they were, and they were LPNs. They're still looking to hire some. But they do have already some on staff that's doing this. But I know it was purchased with care dollars. And so, that would be a good question, Ms. McCall, to find out tomorrow. And, and I can find out some more details about it because I just got this information late because they've been working on it for me.
We know you're going to get some more information. We expect that.
I'll get the rest of it.
Bring the whole story back.
Yeah, I will.
Thank you, Ms. Stacy. Ms. King?
Yeah, mine's going to be short today, this evening. And I am just welcoming back all of our students and our parents. And thank you for coming back and trusting us with your children. And I want to tell our employees, thank you for your dedication to Marion County Public Schools because we could not open our face-to-face schools or our online learning without any of you. And it was exciting and I enjoyed hearing what Dr. Gullett was saying. And to hear the stories and the anticipation of the teachers, like, "I'm so excited, they're coming." And yet, there was a little bit of apprehension. And then, you know, we, even on Facebook, you would see where people walked like twenty thousand steps in a day and, or, or more or less, a little bit less, not much. And just hearing the good stories about our children in class, eager to learn and move forward. And that's how I'm leaving it this evening. Thank you.
Ms. Thora?
Yes, yesterday was one of the best days of my life. It was so great to see the kids back in school. I have a lot of in-town schools, so they're kind of in a shape of an L. And I can start at Maplewood and then hit Ward Highlands and then go to Hillcrest and then Fort King Middle and then Oak Crest and then Vanguard and then finish at Evergreen. And every single school, it, it wasn't a surprise, but it was just so incredibly gratifying to see what these schools have, have pulled off for kids. Because it was really like everyone going to school for the first time. Because even, you know, the salty middle schoolers, you know, that usually tend to know everything, they were coming back for the first time too, you know? Even if they had been at Fort King last year because the traffic patterns were all different. The procedures in the cafeteria were all different. The classroom experience was all different. But it was smooth. And, and all of the teachers in the hallways guiding kids and, you know, Mr. Smallridge was out there and he, he could tell that he was like a test run. You know, he really wanted to make sure that the plans that they had put into place as a school team were being executed with fidelity and were working. And he just looked so satisfied. You know, it, it was really, really cool. And, and at the high school, you know, the kids are nonchalant. But they had their mask on, they had them up most of the time. They were following directions. Staff was everywhere, you know, giving respectful reminders. And it seemed like it meant so much to everybody to be able to be there that they were willing to do whatever it took to make it happen. And that's what's going to enable us to have this continue, is that level of vigilance. So, I, I, I wanted to emphasize that again too because I one-hundred percent agree that, yes, it was great, but it's going to take that maintained level. And I am really looking forward to having the autonomy to make decisions going forward at the local level. I think we're off to a great start. But, and, but if things need to be tweaked and adjusted, we have to do what's best for our kids in our county and be unfettered and, and not be worried about our, is our, is our money for ridership on the bus going to be reduced because less kids are riding and that's really a good thing, you know, right now. So, I just loved yesterday. And my hat is off to every single school. It wasn't just my schools. I watched TV, I, I looked online. It, it was, it was similar everywhere. Everybody stepped up. And that's what it's going to take for this to continue. And I just couldn't be more grateful to everybody. Thank you.
Okay. Well, first of all, I did all of my Bellevue schools except Bellevue High and I'll hit them Friday. And again, I, I echo what everybody has already said. The creativity per school and the fact that each school, okay, here's what we expect, but you decide how you're going to do it. So, the creativity and, and how they were doing that was incredible. The kids, everybody in mask, even the little tiny ones had their cute little mask with sparkles.
Superhero masks.
And one little girl had shoes that matched her mask. Oh, it was just the cutest thing. But everybody was excited. I, I got to witness a couple of the online teachers and the engagement they were having with their classes. So, so, Dr. Gullett, kudos to you and your staff. Because you came in July one. And for us to have the opening that we had yesterday was because of your leadership and your team's leadership. And, and so, kudos to you. It was, we need to, we need to continue with that diligence, as you said. But I was very, very pleased. I also want to thank Kevin Christian. I don't know if you all saw his email, "What Went Right?" Was amazing. The number that caught my eye yesterday, I went, in one day? Our district filled with fifty-six thousand phone calls. In this district yesterday. And I went, that's just an amazing number. But thank you because you put it in such a positive light. If you haven't read it, please do. Because it was very well done. So, thank you to everybody, to staff, to cafeteria workers, the, the janitorial staff, the custodians. They were, just like you said, cleaning door handles, cleaning, it was just.
They had the spray.
It was really amazing. And transportation, although a few glitches, but, but really, really very, very smooth. So, thank you to everybody. And now the issue that we need to open back up and rediscover. I had an email from somebody that's been in the district a long time that, that I have a lot of trust in that was questioning what our guest speaker, I believe his name was Mr. Schaefer, was telling us about cross-country. So, I did a little research and we need to reopen this. Mr. Christian, do you have the pictures? So, he told us no more than seven travel on a cross-country team. And he was with Vanguard. This is Vanguard's boys' traveling cross-country team. And we also have Vanguard's girls' traveling team from Vanguard High School. These were their teams last year. And each high school does travel, I have found out, with about twenty to thirty cross-country team members. So, that was not quite what we were told. So, the other was the event that Mr. Phillips alluded to where there were about a thousand people at that event. Well, and the gentleman told us, "No, maybe two hundred." Well, I did some, we did some checking, there were nine hundred and seventy-five people at that event.
Last year.
Yes. So, what we need to do is, is, I, I do believe that we need to look at each sport individually, but we also need to go back. And that's too many kids to take out and come back out of our county. So, I, I would like for us to go back to Mr. Phillips' recommendation that our kids don't travel, that we start when they say we start. The one, the one, the communications that I have had was that the coaches, the ADs from each school and the principals worked really hard on the plan, knowing what they felt was best. So, I want to go back and say, "I think that we need to follow the plan that they put into place." I don't like that we were told something that really wasn't true, to be very honest, when you look at those pictures. I don't like that we were told something that really wasn't true, to be very honest, when you look at those pictures.
When were those pictures taken?
Last year.
Last year.
Do they ride on a school bus? Is that how their team travels?
I did not ask how they traveled. I think the question is taking the kids out of the county and not knowing how the other counties are handling and bringing them back in and putting them back in school and everything. So I did not ask about the transportation. I was concerned about the numbers, when I saw the numbers. Um, so I think that-
He said it was only seven in a cross-country team?
No. Oh, he did.
He did. I think I remember that.
He said they're traveling. And then the question becomes is, are they all traveling to the same meet at the same time? Um, I don't know. You know, Vanguard is my school. I was there yesterday. Um, staff learned that I was on campus and I was approached by several coaches that thanked us for the decision that we made and felt very much like going forward, there is some problem solving that needs to be done from the coaching level through the ADs and, and get on the same page, uh, more effectively. It was clear to me even with football that, that there was one speaker here that was definitely advocating for one thing and, and then our AD, it was something else. So there, that's, to me, is a communication, um, situation. And I hate to go back on what we said we were going to do. Um, I feel like Coach Schaefer has been with us for a while and that he shared with us from the trenches exactly what he does, exactly what he needs and how he's gonna make it work. So I would be very hesitant to change my mind and change my advocacy for that at, at this point. You know, pictures from last year are one thing, but-
This year's gonna be all different.
I think I already heard that there were less people this year. So I don't know. And, and that to me is getting into the weeds. I don't know.
Well, I, well, I do believe that each high school has around 20 to 30 cross-country members.
And Coach Schaefer has a lot of credibility. I mean, he's not a dishonest man, so something's lost in the translation there.
We misunderstood something he said because I agree. He's not, he's not been handling this and having, you know, great performance out of his kids and everything. He knows as well as anybody what goes on. He's the guy that does it. And, um, the parents do, I understand, do their own transportation, you know? We don't have to-
Yeah, they don't have a bus. They don't have a bus.
And, um, and he said that at the meets, he could keep his students away, you know, keep them social distancing down with where they're supposed to be and standing where they're supposed to be, however many people's there. As I'm sure the other coaches will also be doing the same thing. They'll be social distancing their students also because if there's 12 counties that's going, apparently their school systems trusted their coaches to have enough intelligence on how to handle the students when they were off at a meet. And, um, so I don't know why we should insult the intelligence of our coaches by suggesting that they are giving us information on purpose that was incorrect because I think that, you know, he may know something about this meet that's coming up that we don't know. Because like you said, there's 12 schools involved where normally evidently there's a whole bunch of schools. So last year, there might've been 900 kids there, but there might've been however many county, 30 counties there too. And this year, it sounds like there's gonna be 12. And so could be why he's expecting a smaller crowd than last year. Because some schools are not even, um, you know, many of the kids are not even in the schools. So I believe we should give the coaches a chance to do what they do and give the kids a chance to get their scholarships and, and do their competition and not let some bureaucracy tie this all up with a million reasons for why we can't do something. I believe in giving students a reason for why they can do something.
Ms. Stacy, I don't disagree with that. I think that one of the concerns was the reason that we are having the Marion County Conference is because we can control what goes on at, to some degree, the cleanliness of the locker rooms and, and all of that. And so I think that was a part of the reason. But I do understand, uh, that there are more on a cross-country team than seven. And so do we want to limit the number they can take? Um, I just-
They might drive individually.
I believe that's what he said.
They drive, they drive their cars. I mean, if this is about control, we can put all kinds of controls on them and we can-
Has nothing to do-
You can only have control.
It's about the safety of our children and the health safeties that we, the health things that we have put into place at our schools to try to be sure that we mitigate this virus as much as possible.
Also be drivers to this event. And so I'm sure they can help the coach with what needs to be done because the parents don't want their children exposed any more than you do, Ms. McCall. And so, um, we have to give our parents some credit and our coaches some credit because there are certain events that, um, you know, that's, this, this control. I, I don't understand it. Um, if the parents feel that they can take their students and they can help the coach with social distancing, give them a chance. I mean, let's don't say it can't be done. I don't, I, I'll, I'll challenge anyone that says it can't be done because I believe it can be done. And I want to look for reasons why we can help these students be successful. We can give them opportunities to get their scholarships that their families need. We can do it.
You know, something that was surprising that I read about today on TV that in South Florida, I believe they're gonna start playing football again. It was Mayor Jimenez that was saying, you know, we need to try to get back to some typicality. And I think the stadium is gonna be restricted to 3,000. Normally it holds 64,000 or something, but, you know, to get the social distancing going and so on. And I, and I don't disagree with you either, Ms. McCall. I, I think that all of our concern still remains with keeping things as safe as possible while real establishing as much typicality as possible. But I'm really, I'm really reticent to question the integrity of, of a coach that is doing this as a volunteer, has been very successful, seems to have it in the bag. I have a hard time second guessing that.
Again, I'm-
Want me to say, want me to say what I gotta say first?
Yeah, go ahead.
Y'all know how I felt from the beginning. I, I was very pointed about how I felt about the situation. I think we were paying a, a person from the district to, um, bring back recommendations. And he brought back, he brought us back a recommendation with the coaches' input, with, um, the ADs from those schools' input. And then we went against the recommendation of the person that brought it to us. I knew when, and I don't know that coach. I never saw him before in my life. But I've been to cross-country meets. I've been to track meets. And I know there's more than 200 or 300 kids there. And I know that they're all over the place. So I had concerns from the beginning. So, um, you know how I feel about it. My, my stance hasn't changed from Thursday. My stance hasn't changed from Thursday because safety is always gonna be the primary, uh, standpoint. If Mr. Phillips had talked to coaches, he had talked to, um, the ADs from each school. And that was the plan that the coaches and the ADs came up with. Why did we go against, based on the volunteer coach? I don't get that. I never got that. Because we were saying that our employees who were doing this, their opinion did not matter. That's how I saw it.
How the coaches feel that talk to you?
Well, and, and I'll share that looking at how we've changed and adjusted our on-campus policies and procedures, that's what I feel like our coaches are trying to extend to competition, you know? Um, recognizing how important competition is and supporting academics, which is of course the ultimate goal here. You can have a great career as a cross-country runner until you blow your knee out or whatever else. So I, I get that. Um, there's a lot of, of, of passion, you know, with this. However, and maybe it's just my upbringing, that the people that are in the trenches seem to be closest to this situation. And I know in an organization as big as the one we have, communication always needs to be refined and worked on. And I was just seeing too many different perspectives. And, and I felt like, hopefully there won't be a next time. But, but there needs to be a closer network of communication here before it even comes to us because now we're up here trying to dictate the down there. And I'm not comfortable with that.
And I don't, and I don't think, I don't think we were, I, I, me personally, and I don't think the board was looking for a way to control this situation.
No, I don't want it.
I'm trying to lighten the control.
I think we, I think we were looking at a way to make sure that it happened and it happens safely. I think that was our-
Right.
-point, to make sure that they can continue and, and what he was asking for.
Only we know how to do that, though. The coaches don't know how to do that.
The coaches are the one that gave us the recommendation. They were the ones that gave the, that was one coach. That was one coach that came here and said something. If there had been a lot of coaches that was here saying that, I might've could've bought it. But one coach showed up.
And that doesn't always happen.
That makes a big difference to me. Because the other coaches were a part of creating that plan.
Mr. Cummins, one woman took prayer out of our schools in the entire United States. One person can be very instrumental in getting things done.
We see that. It happened last Thursday.
And you know what?
It happened last Thursday, Ms. Stacy.
Very few people will speak out and say what's best for kids because they don't want to lose their coaching positions if they go out. But because he's not on staff, he was really free to speak where many of our coaches are not free to speak because they would possibly lose their coaching jobs if they came in and said something.
We're not that type of district. We're not gonna be that type of district. Where a person is gonna lose their job because-
People that are, people-
We have moved beyond that. We will not be that type of district.
Well, it's, it's the thing is-
We, us five said that we're not that type of district. So no, there should not be one employee in this district that feel that they cannot come to this board and say what's on their mind.
Well, I don't, I don't know that we would stand up with them because we had a coach that came and we're gonna stand with the, with the administrator.
The administrator and the coaches that came up with that plan. It wasn't Mr. Phillips' plan by himself. It was, if it was just his plan, he wouldn't have came here like that.
I would really be interested to hear what the coaches really think. Why don't we let them talk? Because, um-
We haven't heard from them. We heard from, yeah.
Maybe now we will. Now, maybe now we will. But, um, I don't know. Yeah, I mean, I-
And no, no disrespect to Mr. Phillips either. But, but again, you know, we're getting ready to start athletics here and we're still like all over the place. And, and, and that, that bothers me. And once someone with integrity that has a winning record, you know, does have the courage to come in and share, then I just don't want to, uh, go back on that. I, I, I really don't.
Well, and also, how long are we gonna be hiding from this, this thing? We don't know whether there's an immunizations that's gonna come out. We don't know right now. What I hear is they're 50% effective, so we can just go on and on and on like this. Well, how many, how many classes, we have the class of 2020 and the class of 2021? Just, you know, we take all the opportunities away from the kids because we're, um, trying to, to be 100% safe, which that's, that's a complete impossible goal. We can't be 100% safe. I'm more concerned about these kids' psychological being. And the lady from the health department stood right there, Mr. Cummins, and said she sent her child to school because she's more worried about the mental situation than, than the COVID right now.
What you just asked us to look at about testing and all that stuff, that goes out the window because you're contradicting.
What testing? What are you talking about? I'm not gonna sit here and argue with you unless you're a psychologist or something. What I'm telling you is, I'm not gonna sit here. I'm a conservative. We have different, we have different ways of operating. I believe in giving people power. I don't believe in giving bureaucracies' power over children, they're over parents' own children. If the parents don't feel it's safe for their children to do cross-country, they will not take them. They're not gonna put their children in a situation that's dangerous to them. But if you want to make decisions because you make better decisions than the parents make, then be my guest. But I'm not willing to say that.
Are we a board of, uh, of school board members? And we took a recommendation from someone that brought us a recommendation. We're not making the decision. We were listening to his recommendation for someone that we pay to, to give us this. You have to ask him. Ask him. How many coaches did, ask him. I'm sure he'll tell you.
He's not here. I'd like to know how many parents-
All right, Ms. King.
And football parents and coach and cross-country parents and things were on that committee when they were talking about it.
Good, Ms. King.
I, I need more information. I want to know about the transportation because that's what's key for me. Um, if we tell the cross-country that they can get on a bus-
No, they're not, no.
As many as, and, and we said no to the football, but then yes to that, that is, that's contradicting. So if the parents are transporting and that's their decision, then, you know, I'm gonna stick with my original. But if we were misled, you know, which was insinuated today, then as a board member, I need that information to make an informed decision too. Um, so that's where I stand. And I know I'm that swing vote, but I need more information before I can make that decision to be that swing vote for you guys. So.
You wanna hear right from Mr. Phillips?
If Mr. Phillips can just let me know how they're transported, that's what's key to me.
They're transported by car. No one disputed that.
Well, let's have him confirm.
Well, I'm not 100% sure because I, I've heard a few different-
There may be school vans, some have school vans and-
Right. So I, I need more information on that. But I do want, and again, I mentioned this, you know, last week with the sports. When the sports teams travel around, they're getting sick and it takes the whole team out. For example, hockey, they're in one area, one arena, and they're staying there through their playoffs and everything with just a few select teams. They're not getting ill like the other, like baseball teams are and stuff like that. So, you know, when I'm trying to make my decision, I'm taking that into. And when I hear 12 schools coming to Marion County, now granted, they're outside running or whatever, you know, that is in the back of my mind. And it is unknown, and there's a lot of unknowns with this virus, but I do know it's very contagious. I do know I want our children's safety. That's first. So I think we need to be informed when we make these decisions.
How much you wanna bet me that every one of our cross-country kids are gonna be standing out there? But they can't, but they can't compete. They're going to watch this event. Just because their school's not in it, doesn't mean they're not going. We can't tell the parents, oh, by the way, you can't go to the horse park wherever they're having this. We're not that powerful yet.
I'm, I'm talking more about our kids leaving our county. And I think that's one of the reasons that the coaches put the county league together and talked about it so that they could do intermar- interhigh school- inter-county sports. And that's my biggest concern of taking 20 to 30 per school is what I've been told, cross-country, out of county, coming back in, exactly what you said, Ms. King. We don't know what they're gonna get. It's much more controllable. That's why I'm bringing this up. Is because if the numbers are bigger, then the chances of them going out of county and bringing something back become greater. So that's why I'm bringing this up. That it's not just necessarily seven cross-country runners, as we were told per school, but it could be 20 to 30 runners.
Or even more if it's a boys' and girls' cross-country invitational.
Yep. So it's, it's-
Forty to 60 kids.
Correct. And it's what is it that we can have more control over is within our county. And it's not that I don't want them to compete.
Right. We're not saying that. We're not saying that at all. We're saying we want them to compete safely.
Correct.
That's it.
Well, I think the coaches know how to do that.
Ms. King, I, I think what you said was very sensible. I think that, you know, getting more information, getting confirmation on a couple of our concerns with the transportation is important. Again, I am separating between, you know, football and basketball and, and cross-country and where these events are held and are they hanging out in a dugout? How are they gonna keep them separated? You know, what's the plan? But again, using school as a model, we had a lot of kids in school. And it was very clear how many mitigating procedures were in place. So if we can do it for school, I'd like to think that we can do it for as many sports as possible because they're important too. So that's where I am.
And I'd also like to know exactly how many, I'd like to know, because if this is some invitational, state invitational, we should already know how many teams are going to this invitational. We should know how many of our kids are participating in it, the real numbers, um, if it's boys and girls. And I think you can make a better decision if we know some of those numbers as well. Because the thing is, our responsibility is not put these kids in, in situations where they can, we know the disease is, like you said, is serious, but it's deadly. We don't need to put our kids in deadly situations.
Children have a better chance to be in, in a car accident or struck by lightning than dying from COVID. We know that.
I don't, yeah, I, Ms. Stacy, I don't gamble. I don't even play the lottery. I don't gamble with people's lives.
That's a little dramatic.
We've made it all clear where we stand, so why don't we just move forward?
You got that, thank you.
And that's all I have.
Thank you. You sure that's everything? That was it?
That's it.
Okay. Um, again, we, we are glad that we're back in school, that we have, um, crossed the threshold of our brick and mortar schools one more time, twice now, two days in a row. And that, um- And that, um, the risks are being mitigated down as much as we can. I think all of our staff, our district staff, our, our, our school-based staff, our support personnel, every person in this district has made a huge effort to making sure that we return to school safely. And, um, you, we, we have, we are still working on making sure that we stay safe. Again, as we said earlier, please don't get lax right now. We can't afford to get lax just because, um, we're back in school and it seems to be okay right now. This virus is still out there. The news still show you every day this folk are leaving here. Marion County had a huge number of people that passed just a couple of days ago. So we need to be conscious and aware of those things and not just, um, assume that we're back to normal because it is, you could easily slip back into that mindset that everything is normal. We're not at normal. We're still at cold red, and we need to act as such. Um, I did, um, get some, some, um, communications about the M.O.U. and I thank, um, Mr. Altobello for being here earlier and that we were working on some type of M.O.U. for our staff. Is that something that we're working on?
Process, yes.
Yeah, cuz, um, okay, so we, we definitely need to be trying to work on that. Staff, don't, please don't think that we're, we have, as, as board members or as a district have just dismissed anything. Your safety is, is vitally important to this district being successful. Their safety, you're here. We need you here. We need you safe. We need you well because our kids, whether they're in an online platform or whether they're in a face-to-face platform, we need teachers to be in front of their kids, whether it's a screen or whether it's live. They still, we still need instructors to be in front of them. So, um, we are still working on some things, and I'm sure that we'll be getting some recommendations very, very soon from the superintendents on that as well. So please stay safe. Please continue to be vigilant in your safety protocols. Um, I, I did see something as I was traveling across county yesterday morning, and I, I almost stopped to take a picture of it, but I, I didn't. Um, I saw, I, I passed several bus stops, and every bus stop, the kids at the bus stop had their mask on at the bus stop, and the buses had not even got there. That says something. That says something to me that parents are taking this thing serious and that parents want their kids to be safe. And so, and it was, it was not just an African-American bus stop. It was coming, it was several bus stops of all different types of kids, diversities, conservatives and liberals. They were all there at the bus stop, and they had on masks. So I was pleased to see that because we want to make sure that everybody is safe. So please, um, continue to do that. Please continue to do that.
The parents have done a great job with that. They're the first day of school doing that.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. And I did get a call today about, from a parent, about the mask that had the little ventilators on them. Apparently, um, there's several types of masks with ventilators. If the ventilator does not have a filter in it, it does expel things. But if the ventilator has a filter in it, and I got one, someone made sure I had it, yeah, a brand-new one. It's actually triple-layered. It actually has two layers. I'm sure they can see it. It actually has a put-in filter, and it has two layers, one in the front, the, the filter, and then another layer. So it's not the type of, uh, ventilator that, uh, people are thinking where it's just spitting out stuff. So the CDC recommendations was kinda, were old, were talking about the ones that did not have the three layers. So we kinda need to make sure our schools know this because there were some parents that called me arate because they had this exact, this exact, um, mask, and were told that they could not use it. And, um, they've spent invested money on it, and of course, you can see it's, it's actually three layers of protection. Um, I did call the principal. I hadn't had this yet at school. Based on a CDC, well, the teacher told them, based on the CDC recommendation. But I think if they're going to say they can't use, they need to look at the mask and find out first if it has the layers. If it doesn't have the layers, of course, we don't want them to use it.
But you can't take the filters out.
Correct. And even with this one, even with this filter out, it's still two layers. It's still two layers. So bef, I, I would just ask that our, our schools be conscious to find out what type of ventilator mask it is because some of them do allow air to get in and expel the CO2. So we just kinda need to be conscious of that. And other than that, um, I'm, I'm glad that we're back in school at some point, whether virtually or whether in person. I think all of us probably breathed a sigh of relief yesterday that, um, that we were back. And, and, and let me say this, um, to Dr. Gullah and to the team, the, the growth areas that you addressed are not unique to Marion County. I'm talking to every county in, in central Florida. Our Florida are having the same issues. So what would make us think that we would be so unique that we would not have some of these same issues? The thing is that we have to do, as other districts are doing, are find ways to work out those, those kinks.
Ms. Cummins, I have a one more question for Dr. Gullah.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
You said that we had six thousand less students show up between online and brick and mortar?
No. Six thousand from last year, first day of school. Six thousand less.
Day one from last year to day one this year.
Counting, but counting the brick and mortar and the, where are those kids?
We're, again, she gave you some numbers could be because we're doing a stagger start with the kindergarten.
We're not gonna have that many kindergartners. How many kindergartners do we have?
No, we don't. It's not, it's not all kindergartens. That's why I was saying we're still missing some students. And the numbers are still quite a bit different from day one last year.
And there were some schools, some parents, I talked to some today, that are still trying to register their school, register their kids. So we're hoping that by the next, by, within ten days, we would have recouped most of these kids. But that was a big number. I heard that number yes, last night.
It's been on my mind the whole time we've been sitting here. I'm like, six thousand from brick and mortar different or overall and...
From the first day of school last year to this first day, six thousand less. That's a lot of kids.
A lot of students.
A lot of students.
Have you heard whether, um, have you heard from Florida Virtual or anybody to find, I mean, is there a way for us to find out?
No, we're actually, we're, we're trying to track down the numbers to look at Florida Virtual and other places they might be, but the registration...
Then they would have to check out as home education. So have, what, what kind of numbers have we got that's checked?
Home education, I don't have, we didn't have a current number today. We knew that the last count, we were up, we were, uh, close to five hundred roughly. So that, that was a pretty high number, quite a bit higher than it had been before. So we're still trying to track down all those children, where they are. We knew that they would be fewer this year, but that's quite a, quite a big difference.
So would some of them have applied for the McKay Scholarship or the scholarship? Would we have those numbers where they're going to private school?
Right. That's why we're trying to...
We would've had that last year too. I mean, we'd have had the...
We would, we would have. So we're still trying to track down why such a big variance.
Now, at what point by state statute, because this is a compulsory situat, school-state, do they, do the home education students have to report to the district? Like, what's the state of their children, or can they, like, my children are in private school, my children are home education? Or is that not required by the state?
When you say home education, you're talking about homeschool kids?
Do they have to report to the district that they're being homeschooled or...
Yeah, they do.
Yes, that's part of, yes, part of requirement of registering students. We, we do think there, we do believe...
But if they're not regi, but if they're not registering with us, I, my question is, these students, say I have a, a kindergartner, never been to school, do I by state law have to report to the district? My student's going to private school or I'm home educating, or is that considered none of the district's reason to know, need to know?
Right. They, they don't not, they do not have an obligation to tell us they're going to private school.
So they can, so these students can all be on home ed right now and not be, not report to us.
So they're, they're, they're reporting if they're going to, to homeschool to do home education? And so we register, we have those students' numbers. What we do not have are those who go to private school. If they're going completely private, that's their choice, and they're not obligated to tell us that.
But are home-educated students required to report to our district?
Our home education, yes, we have those numbers. Those are the numbers we're tracking. But again, there's still a variance in number, so they could be private. One of our biggest concerns are the students who are not registered at all, that are just waiting. So we anticipate that some students and parents are at home waiting and haven't made a choice. That's why we're trying to make sure they're in school somewhere.
Do you have certain areas in the district where there's, where there's more shortage? Like schools specifically, like this school had about eight hundred last year, and this year they've only got six hundred. Like, do you have regions, like you know where these children are?
We're looking for patterns. We don't have that. We're looking to do that right now. So we're getting, we have more of an informal gauge. Every, every school we go to, we ask. But we're, we're gonna be tracking all of that down.
See where those regions are.
Correct. We want them in school somewhere.
So we will, um, I'm sure within the ten-day count, we'll know where those, we'll know where a lot of those are, those kids are.
And compulsory education starts at age six, right?
Yeah, that's right. It doesn't start in kindergarten.
Yeah.
First grade, I think, yeah. So again, we, um, thank everybody for what they're doing. Um, we're looking forward to getting some better, good reports, um, as we continue to move through this and, and, and praying that no one gets sick or anything like that. And, um, I'm interested to hear the numbers towards the end of the week, where we are. Um, but like I said, we're not unique than any other district. Every district is having their same, these same challenges, and we'll get beyond them. We'll get beyond them at some point. So I think we have, I have enough, uh, for other colleagues that will help us get beyond all our issues. So, uh, we'll do that. So, and a great superintendent and her team. So with that being said, Ms. Martinez-Lopez, are there any parents who submitted time requests speaking of Charles Disner in Marion?
Yes, we have an off-air re-entry, early re-entry.
All right. This concludes the televised and business portion of the meeting. We're gonna recess at six fifty-one E.M.